Okay, if we're ready, before I... Well, let me gavel out of executive session at... Oh, okay, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to authorize the mayor to execute a personnel action form for the city attorney based on the discussions held by the city council tonight in executive session.
Do we have a second?
All second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, it passes unanimously, and now I will gavel out of executive session at 6:09. And before I gavel into the regular meeting, I want the public to be aware that the city is implementing a new agenda software, and tonight's workshop and meeting are the first time that we'll be using this new software. Please have patience as we learn the new process. During this transition, we may experience some issues. So with that, I will call the city council October 8th meeting to order at 6:10 PM. And Jeff, will you lead us in the pledge?
You would please bow your heads with me. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you this evening to ask your guidance while we do the business of our city. Lead us in your direction, lead us in the best direction for our city, dear Lord. We also ask, dear Lord, to watch over our government leaders, watch over the United States, point us in the right direction. Help there be some kind of resolve somewhere down the line for Ukraine and Israel, dear Lord. Dear Lord, please watch over our fire and police officers that protect us and take care of us on a daily basis, dear Lord. Please, dear Lord, watch over our military as they protect us as a whole. We ask this in your holy and heavenly name, dear Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Now we go to announcements of community interest. Stuart, please.
Thank you, Mayor Proton, and thank you for sitting in tonight. We appreciate it, keep things going. All right, we have two events in the park this Saturday. First one, Art in the Park, this is a new event for us. It runs 4:30 to 6:30, so if you like to draw with chalk, if your kids like to draw with chalk, we encourage you to come by. There's gonna be a lot of chalk drawing out there. Like I said, that runs to 6:30, and then we encourage you to stick around because we'll be starting The Haunted Mansion as the movie's in the park, the last one for this year, and that will start at dark at the pavilion there at Louise Hayes. So be sure and check those out. Next Friday, the Centennial 100th Anniversary of Scott Schreiner Golf Course. They're holding a tournament. I believe they still have rooms for teams, 24 teams that have room for, and I think there's four on each team, so if you want to play golf out there on that day, get your reservation in. The night before, there will be a centennial celebration from 5:30 to 7:00 PM at the course with live jazz and some light refreshments, so please come out for that, too. And then these other events will actually occur after the next council meeting, but we'll go ahead and get them on people's radar. It's the Haunted Ghoul Pool, it's October 26th, always a lot of fun with that. And then Mountain Bike Festival is October 26th and 27th. Then, of course, the big family Fright Night, October 31st on Halloween. A great fun time on that. We also want to remind everybody to save the date. That is Wednesday, October 23rd. We'll be hearing from our consultant, Freeze and Nichols, on results from the recently conducted poll. This is a continuation of our Kerrville 2050 Comprehensive Plan. It's hard to believe, it's almost six years now since that was implemented. We've got updates going on on that, and we have a downtown plan and a Nimitz Lake area plan, so if you have a chance, come by the Arcadia. Starts at 6 o'clock, and they'll be talking about those poll results and then some more planning on the downtown plan and the Nimitz area plan. So put that on your radar, too. And that's it for me, turn it over to y'all.
Thank you, sir. Any announcements, council? Out here.
Well, I just want to pass on a little story that happened yesterday in my office. A gentleman came in and talked to us about who he wants to bank with because he's moving here from Panama City Beach, Florida. And I asked him, I said, "What brought you to Kerrville?" He grew up in Louisiana, but you know what brought him to Kerrville? Our river trail. He said he came here and he has utilized our river trail, and that is what solidified their decision to move to Kerrville. So I just, I thought it was a pretty awesome deal, and for him to say that is the reason.
Well, thank you for sharing. Anything Kent? Okay. With that, we have three presentations tonight, starting with a proclamation, making October 2024 as Fire Prevention Month. Chief? Gentlemen, thank you for being here. Okay. City of Kerrville Proclamation. Whereas, the city of Kerrville is committed to ensuring the safety of all those living in and visiting Kerrville. Home fires are a serious public safety concern, and whereas, home fires killed more than 2,700 people in the United States in 2022, according to the National Fire Protection Association, the NFPA. And fire departments in the United States responded to 360,000 home fires, and roughly three out of five fire deaths happen in homes with either no smoke alarms or with no working smoke alarms. And whereas, smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of fire in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. And residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of the home. And whereas, Kerrville Fire Department is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas, the 2024 Fire Prevention Week trademarked theme, "Smoke alarms make them work for you", serves to remind us the importance of having working smoke alarms in the home. Now therefore, the city council does hereby proclaim October 2024 as Fire Prevention Month, and urge citizens and visitors of Kerrville to check their kitchens for fire hazards and use safe cooking practices for Fire Prevention Month 2024. And it is signed by our mayor, Joe Herring. Round of applause. We'll give the picture, and then I'll have you guys introduce yourselves, please. You guys hold it. Okay, let's start with you, chief.
Eric Maloney, Fire Chief, been with the city of Kerrville for 27 years.
Lieutenant Sam Hughes, been with the Kerrville Fire Department for the past 18 years.
Driver Dan Foigey, I have been with Kerrville for nine and a half years.
Driver Mason Littner, been with Kerrville for almost seven years.
Battalion Chief Billy Williams, been with the department 24 years.
Division Chief, Marshal Jason Leakey, been with the city 22 years.
Thank you for what you do, protecting our community, keeping us safe, and distributing the education that we all need. So thank you very much.
They've been out all week, so this is Fire Prevention Week, too. So they go to all the schools, the daycares, and they all make that difference. They make that impact, over probably 3,500 kids that they're making an impact on. We saved lives probably about 10 years ago. A kid from Nimitz Elementary knew what to do. They had a house fire, got her family out before something tragic happened. I encourage everyone here, go check your smoke detectors, check your families. Just ask around, if you can do a plus one, that'll make an impact here. We see it a lot, we see a lot with the smoke detectors out there. They're not working. They make a difference, they will save time and give you time to get out of the house and alert you to be alerted to get there. So I encourage everyone to please do that. So once again, thanks for everything.
I also want to mention that what you do with the schools, the education at our elementary level, there's no telling the potential lives you save by doing that.
The ripple, so it's them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, I appreciate you.
Okay, next, we have a Kerrville Kindness Award, and it's Lorena McCullough and Martin Greenwell. Will come forward, please.
He's coming out from the back. Come on, Martin. There he is.
Okay, let me read this. Okay, "The city of Kerrville has in recent months placed a renewed emphasis on expanding its informational reach with the city's Hispanic population. Towards that end, utility clerk Lorena McCullough has been transcribing into Spanish information about city activities, events, and operational functions, and recording radio ads with Rev FM detailing those operations. Multimedia specialist Martin Greenwell recently joined Lorena in recording those ads, and the duo's efforts are proving instrumental in building a solid information source for our Spanish-speaking citizens. The city of Kerrville and the city council sincerely appreciate Lorena's and Martin's dedication and commitment to serving this segment of our citizens." And it's signed by all but Kent. So we're gonna let him sign. And then you will get to take those with you. And I'll give one to you. And Kent, and one to you. I'll get a picture, and then I'll have you guys say a little information about yourself. All right, well, first of all, applause. What prompted you to, I mean, was it at a request, a request by a citizen? Or what made you decide to do this?
Well, I was asked if I could help with the Hispanic community, which, to translate, you know, in Spanish, to help them know that we do have a Spanish speaker, you know, in our department, the utility building department. I'm there to help. I'm happy to translate and to help with them with their needs, on anything they need, and also to let them know what the community has around, like, you know, parks and recreation and all that stuff, so.
And what's your role in this?
I assisted.
Do you get on Rev FM?
Well, yeah, we have a couple of segments together. She did summons.
Is it gonna be continuing?
Yes, we will continue these periodically throughout the year for different events and public information service.
Well, I have to say that this is a tie that binds us all as a community, so thank you for that.
It's our privilege.
Yeah. My pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, and last but not least, I have a certificate of recognition. So would Mr. Ray Gutierrez please come forward?
I was wondering why y'all drugging the city council.
Have you took place in our restaurant?
Okay, Mr. Gutierrez. The city of Kerrville gives you the certificate of recognition for your many years of music, service, and compassion, in recognition of your lifetime of achievements, including serving in the United States Air Force as a hand-to-hand combat instructor for B-52 bomber crews, for migrating to a musical career following his military service, including forming the bands Los Momentos, The Latin Four, and Ray Gutierrez and the Silverado Band, becoming a licensed chemical dependency and grief counselor in the early 1970s, and a nearly 55-year career in mental health care with organizations like La Hacienda Treatment Center, Hill Country Mental Health and Development Disability Center, Hill Country Community Needs Council, BCFS Health and Human Services, as well as various group homes. The Kerrville City Council is proud to present Ray with a certificate of recognition for his enduring passion for helping others, and witness whereof, it is signed by Joe Herring Jr., our mayor. So thank you very much. And tell us, what prompted you to go from hand-to-hand combat to playing a guitar?
I was born and raised in this town 83 years ago. And I've seen a lot of changes, a lot of changes. I could probably name every street, every store down this main street, water street here. Joined the military in 1957, and I was an instructor for neither the two crews, and I got in Fort Worth, Carthwaite Airport, and I got shipped to Guam. And I was there about three months. Three months later, a typhoon came and picked up my unit and dropped it in the Pacific Ocean, so they transferred me to recreation, which was boring. So I played tennis in high school, I played basketball in high school, so I became, joined every base team I could to get to the wilder Pacific. In the meantime, I had a lot of time on my hands. I went to the service club, and I saw a guy playing piano. I says, "It's that Hardeston," so he sat down and taught me three chords. In 1958, I had my first band overseas called The Blazers. Came back to Fort Worth, joined a group called Don Hudson and the Royal Kings. In Fort Worth, I played with Meryl McTutten. I had a wrote a song that was played on American Pastime at the church. Moved to San Antonio, played with a lot of the Hamilton groups, Southern Sunliners, Henry and the Hare Beers. My music just took off, it just, it's in me, it came from my dad. My dad loved music. When I started a relationship with my dad, I would go see him in Illinois, and we'd sit in the carport, and he'd listen to all genres of music, and I got that from him. I love this town, always have. Came back, no reservations, and I found that God put me in situations where he wanted me to, and that was helping other people through life experience. And this is quite a surprise. It reminded me of a time, pardon, it reminded me of a time that a friend of mine asked me to play for a birthday party and buzz his barbecue. That's a true story. So they told me to keep them at home while they're decorated, so I went over there and buzzed the decorations to set them up PA system. When I showed up, walked in, everybody hollered, "Surprise!" And I looked at him, and he looked at me, and I said, "It's for you." He says, "No, it's for you."
Awesome.
Yeah. Great story.
We'll be having a community celebration at the Doyle Community Center Pavilion. It was supposed to be a surprise. You are this year's honoree, obviously. So everyone's all welcome to come and join and celebrate you. We'll have music and food, and all are welcome. Five to eight.
Do I have to sing for myself?
Oh, this Saturday, the 12. Yes, yes.
Thank you so much. Okay, now we come to the visitors' forum. Ms. Shelley?
Yes, ma'am, we have two. Barbara Burton.
Barbara Burton, 235 Guadalupe Street. Mr. Harris, I'm sure you meant to include Joe Herring in your prayers and wishes for his speedy recovery, and Joey's a good man.
Yes.
And I'm concerned about him. Thank you. I miss my little stand.
How are you?
I honestly believe that the erasure of our beloved heritage tree on August 5th, 2023, a year and two months ago, would have served as the wake-up call as to the need for a thoughtful, robust tree ordinance in order to protect the trees that are left. Evidence confirms, however, that the last council did not deem this issue to be a priority. Now, this council, having been in place since May, doesn't seem to be addressing the issue with any more sense of urgency than the last one did. Meanwhile, our trees are being mowed down as though they were nothing more than weeds. I reference Hobby Lobby, Whiskey Springs, and Scooter's Coffee, just to name a few recent sites of tree annihilation. If the citizenry were authorized to create and pass an ordinance, I can assure you that our beloved trees would already have the protection they so desperately need. But that's not the way the rules are set up. You, the elected and appointed leaders on council, are the only entity that has the authority to create and pass an ordinance. The Kerrville 2050 Plan that we're using as a roadmap in making decisions for the future of our community states in the opening line of the community vision statement on page 11, "Kerrville will be a vibrant, welcoming, and inclusive community that, number one, respects and protects the natural environment that surrounds it." So not only do you have the authority, according to the Kerrville 2050 Plan, you also have the responsibility to protect the natural environment that surrounds us. Just as I did at the council meeting in January of this year, I implore you to please finally get a tree ordinance in place. We are, after all, not reinventing the wheel here. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
George Peruti.
George Peruti, 1616 Glen Road. Didn't plan to do this, but we actually do have the authority. We can actually petition. If you get enough people to petition, you can create an ordinance that way. Just throwing it in there. So, but that's, I came up to kind of give a little bit of a, if you will, economic summary or one person's outlook on something. One is to actually refer to something Mr. McKinney keeps bringing up, which is, a couple of times you've kind of rationalized cost increases based on, "We're just trying to keep up with inflation." Unfortunately, I think you have it backwards. Government spending, the increase of government spending actually contributes to inflation, and in fact, our government increases, our government's expanding, our local government's expanding faster than inflation right now. So it'd be better to justify the expenses or the increases in costs off of the expenses in your budget that require spending. The other thing is, the, I don't know if anybody else reads the budget. Everybody knows I read a lot of the stuff that nobody cares about. But in the budget this year, they produced a page talking about EIC, and they listed all the spending that EIC has committed to over the last 25 years. Interestingly, and it was 89 million, just throwing a number out, since 1999. Interestingly enough, from 1999 to 2023, it was 60 million in one year, 2024. EIC committed $29 million to projects, good or bad, in one year. And looking at the projects that they committed to, not one of them had anything to do with job creation. You really need to prioritize the spending that's coming out of EIC to be fulfilling the name Economic Improvement Corporation, as opposed to the amenity building corporation, which is what it seems to be right now. Every pet project that comes along goes to EIC to get money. They get given it, we call it quality of life. Unfortunately, when you raise the expense of government, you're raising the expense of the cost of living in this town, which, from my standpoint, is arguably not better quality of life. It might be, it's a trade-off, obviously, but I would just encourage you to look at and review your spending agreements that come from EIC to be a little more about driving the economy locally and putting wealth in people's hands as opposed to amenities on the street. Thanks.
Thank you.
That's the end of the citizen speakers.
Okay. Now we get to the consent agenda, and I want to say that Consent Agenda Item 4D, I'm not going to pull it, however, please note, council, that Items 8A and 9B have been corrected to read as a 4-0 vote, and Item 9A to read Councilmember McKinney instead of Mayor McKinney.
What?
A copy of the corrections have been placed by each of you.
And Madam Mayor, we do have a citizen who wishes to speak on 4B, as in boy.
4B, as in boy?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, so anyone else want to pull anything? Okay, so can we get a motion on A, C, and D, and we'll pull B?
I would move to approve the consent agenda for A, B, and D.
Do we have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, it passes. All right, let's go to 4B.
George Peruti.
George Peruti again. So everybody knows this is kind of my pet project, the streets. So I actually just had a couple of questions. Do, so part of the issue for me, or at least the way I see it, is that we aren't maintaining our streets, we're just kind of throwing some money at it, but we actually know that we're losing ground on the quality of our streets. So this agenda bill discusses a study or the contract with whoever did the assessment. I don't know when the most recent one was, was it last year, maybe? And so in that, do we have a clue as to what our current, the estimate of our current street PCI is, which is just the grade, I guess you'd say, of our entire network? And then the other is, do we have an estimate more current than the one that I keep quoting from 2019 of how much would it cost to maintain that PCI year in and year out? So those are my two questions.
That's the end of the citizen speakers.
Okay.
Do they have any comment?
Michael?
Yes, ma'am, so Success Engineering is the firm that we use to address our PCI study. So that was done at the end of last year, and so, and the beginning of this year. I think I'll have to get a date back to you. But for an overall score for the entire, George, is that what you're asking about? Okay, we can get that, we can get that to y'all. And, you know, so if part of the question is the mechanics of, you know, how we come to that, your just overall score, okay? And then also the... And then also the question of the total cost per year to keep you at a base level is what you're asking for. I can bring that, we weren't going to discuss PCI study in depth tonight, so I don't have that information in front of me, but we can have that for the next meeting, for sure.
Is there a way that you can email Mr. Berudi with that information?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and we encourage, we encourage every citizen to email us ahead of time, because if they plan on talking about it, we can get that information to them. Usually, we can get that information, I know Georgia's, you know, emailed before on stuff, and we, our teams are very responsive. So, yeah, we encourage anybody who has a question on something, reach out to our teams.
Okay.
I had a quick question about that, too. When will the start date be?
The start date is, okay. Proceed. Anybody has any easier questions while I look up the answer to that question? I will happily take that.
Well, that's why I asked, because I looked for it, too.
That's why he's looking. So I just noticed in the contact, it mentions that work is the 2024, in Article 1, oh one, that is a 2024 Slurry Seal Project, but that document is not really referenced as an exhibit to the contract, so it's not, I mean, the document exists, but it's not really referenced within the contract, so I wonder if that's just oversight or, but it seemed like it should be referenced.
Say it one more time, sir.
Okay, so under 101, 1.01, it mentions the 2024 Slurry Seal Project, but it's not defined in the contract. There is a separate document, but it doesn't say it's Exhibit A to the contract.
It needs, obviously, it needs to be, the scope needs to be defined in the agreement, so taking your.
Just define that as Exhibit A and then attach it.
All right, sorry. Yes, ma'am, I can do that.
Just curious, because I think one of those streets that's on here is very close to mine, I was just curious.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's the end of our.
Could I just say one more thing?
Sure, go ahead.
Oh, she left.
Oh.
I was just going to say, we're working on the tree ordinance.
Yes.
It's just not something you can whip out like that. I mean, there's a lot of ins and outs, and you have to be careful that you really think it through. So we are, we are working on a tree ordinance of some type.
Okay, that is.
I make a motion?
Yes, yes.
I make a motion that we approve 4B.
Second, by Jeff. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. That's the end of our consent agenda, and now we're on to the public hearing. Ms. Shelley?
Ordinance number 2024-25, an ordinance annexing a 13.08 tract of land into the corporate limits of the city of Kerrville, Texas, such property generally located adjacent to Cypress Creek Road and on the southeast corner of the road and Loop 534. The property more specifically described in the ordinance as being located within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of and adjacent to the city limit, adopting a service agreement, establishing the zoning for of and establishing the zoning for the annexed property as a multifamily residential zoning district R3, and providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Drew?
Good evening, council. As Ms. McLeinen said, this is an annexation of 13.08 acres near Loop 534 and Cypress Creek Road. That is currently in the ETJ, the adjacent property is zoned ag, and that's the case following this agenda item. It is part of Strategic Catalyst Number 8, which does include multifamily as one of the listed uses in that area. There's that description there. And Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with unanimous vote on September 5th. I'd be pleased to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
Any questions?
Okay.
Okay, I will open the public hearing at 6:43. Anybody want to speak? If not, I will close the public hearing at 6:44 and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2024-25 on the first reading.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor? Raise your right hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. Item 5B, Ms. Shelley?
Ordinance number 2024-26, an ordinance emitting Chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas zoning code, by changing the zoning of an approximate 7.83 acre tract of land and generally located on the southeast corner of the intersection of Loop 534 and Cypress Creek Road, FM 1341, from an agriculture zoning district AG to a multifamily zoning district R3, and providing other matters relating to the subject. We do not have any citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Okay.
This is the adjacent seven acres to the annexation. It is currently zoned ag with the rezoning, the rewrite of the zoning code, a lot of the property along Loop 534 that was undeveloped was zoned ag as, more or less as a placeholder, knowing that catalyst area would have further development and further study. So they are requesting R3 for this as well. And the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously on September 5th as well. Be pleased to answer any questions.
Okay. Council, any questions? Okay, then I will open the public hearing at 6:45. Go ahead. Mr. Berudi?
So, two questions. One, so this, this one that we're talking about on this item, is which part of that picture?
So it's between Loop 534 and the city limits, the black line running through the property. So this is approximately 300 feet adjacent to Loop 534.
Okay, so it's the strip?
Yes. And the annexation is the, I guess, the top part adjacent to Cypress Creek.
The real question I was going to ask is, is there anybody, I mean, it's kind of curious as being, first zoning is going to be R3, so the question is, is there anybody right now that is, you don't have to name them, but is anybody approached the city looking for their, you know, with their hand out, asking to build some R3 apartments in here? That's just a question.
The applicant is requesting to rezone to R3 for a multifamily project. At this time, there's not been any city ask for anything.
Right, any other speakers? And I will close the public hearing at 6:47, and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2024-26 on first reading.
Second.
All in favor? Raise your right hand. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 5C.
Ordinance number 2024-27, ordinance emitting ordinance numbers 200123 and 201605, which created and later amended respectfully, respectively, a planned development district, PDD pursuant to the city zoning code, by changing the zoning of Lot 1, Block 2, Kerrville Airport Commerce Park Phase 1, a subdivision within the city of Kerrville, Texas. The property more commonly known as 101 Airport Commerce Parkway, from being part of the PDD to a like commercial C2 zoning district, ordering, publication, and providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
This is a request to rezone the Lot 1 of the Airport Commerce Park to C2. It is currently part of the planned development district that encompasses all of the Airport Commerce Park. It is part of the Strategic Catalyst Area 11, which focuses on the airport and Highway 27 and any future development, and the zoning request is consistent with the Strategic Catalyst Area and the comprehensive plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval on September 5th. Be pleased to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
Counsel?
Makes sense to me.
No, good.
All right, I will open the public hearing at 6:49. Any speakers? And I will close the public hearing at 6:49 and ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2024-27.
Do we have a second?
First reading.
I'm sorry.
That's first reading, right?
First reading, yes. Delane, you seconded that? All in favor? All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, on to item 6A.
Ordinance number 2024-28, an ordinance approving a project and financing plan for tax increment reinvestment zone number 2, City of Kerrville, Texas, making findings related to such plan, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. There are no citizen speakers signed up, and this is not a public hearing.
Okay, Michael?
My time is up, I can't. So today is apparently the day for it. If you notice in the packet, in your ordinance, there are a few weird pages towards the very end of it. Those are pages from staff meetings that I have with my staff. I bring the tacos every time, paid for out of my own pocket. You do want to go to my meetings, they are fun. However, I'm very thankful that I write my notes the way that I do things, and there's nothing that shouldn't be in there. However, it shouldn't be in the ordinance. So luckily for all of us, this is a first reading. And this will be stricken from the next section there, so. In any event, so this is the financing plan for tax increment reinvestment zone number 2. We've talked about this project for a long time. Back in September, beginning of September, the TERES Board, which is representatives of the ownership of the property, mostly made up of Lennar representatives and some of their engineers, met to approve the financing plan that was previously the preliminary financing plan, and it has now become the final, the financing plan, not final financing plan, but not preliminary any longer. And so should you all choose to approve that, this document, after the second reading and the amendment, removing my notes, will get forwarded on to the comptroller's office, and we will, we will have this one into the record. With that, I will turn it over for any questions.
Counsel, any questions?
No, I had some questions, but I got them answered yesterday, but I had questions about the base year, it's 2024, and a lot of my questions were answered in this material.
Do you want to, do you want to?
Tell them what they were?
Yeah, just for purposes of maybe the public has the same questions and they could be answered.
Okay, well, one of them was the base year is 2024.
Yes, ma'am.
I wish that it is. It's 62 homes, and after looking at the schedules, it looks like Lennar will be held to the price range that we agreed to.
Yes, ma'am, so there's, there's, there's an escalator in there for the average median income each year that they're allowed to go up to, and anything in excess of that has to be proven out by receipts. Let's say lumber jumps 50% somehow, they have to justify any increase beyond that 2.9%. And, yes, ma'am.
Those are my basic questions, and I'm, you know, we're doing what we've been asked to do for so long, and that's get housing on the market. And you can argue the type that you want or the price you want to pay, but the truth is, we had none for so long, so, and it's not easy. I mean, these are the reasons we are getting housing now, so, yay.
Thank you, Delane. Anything? Any other comments, questions? No? Okay, well, then I will entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2024-28 on first reading.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, which one, I can't, okay. All in favor? Raise your right hand, any opposed? And it passes unanimously. On to item 7A.
Economic Development Incentive Agreement between the City of Kerrville, Texas and the Blue Wood Hillside Heights LLP. This item is eligible for executive session, 551.071, and we do have one citizen speaker.
Okay. Do we need a motion to go into executive session on this or not?
Y'all don't have to, if you don't want to, it's up to y'all.
I think so.
Okay.
I don't think so.
Okay. Okay, go ahead and fill us in, Michael, and then we'll, we'll ask for our speaker.
Yes, ma'am. So Martin, do you have that slide? So this is the improvement agreement for, or incentive agreement for, for the Blue Wood Apartment Project. If y'all remember, this is up to $480,000 in permit and fee waivers to include parkland dedication waivers, and then their request was for $520,000 in rebates over a 10-year period that would start at 100%, and then it would work its way down to 30% and stay at 30% for the last three years. So this is the agreement that we have worked out. There were some modifications to it, there was some discussion about zoning, so that's a planned development district, and so for clarity's sake, the city is going to institute a rezoning for that particular parcel of property ourselves, and so we've incorporated that into the agreement. But other than that, I'll stand ready to answer any questions that you have, and there's the sections that were added and deleted.
Well, it says here that year eight is 30%, year nine is 20%, and year 10 is 10%, but you're saying that it's 30% for the last three years?
It should be 30% for the last three years.
Yours says 30% for the last three years?
2010, 302010.
Yeah, 302010.
Anyway, it's supposed to say 303030.
Yeah.
I'm just looking at the.
Okay, because I think we're, I'm looking at a different page, I guess.
It said software.
Thirty percent for the last three years.
Okay.
That might be the agenda page.
It is.
And this is part of the.
Oh, on the front.
It's the software.
Yeah, we will, we will work out the kinks in that, but.
Got it.
I didn't even look at.
Okay. Okay, any discussion? Jeff?
I'm here, this is, been pretty well thought out, and I know we have county support with it as well.
Yeah.
I'm good.
Okay.
Speaker?
Yes, speaker, please.
George Berudi.
George Berudi, 1616 Glen Road. So not to go into a lot of this stuff, just basically, just one part. You're basically doing a tax rebate, property tax rebate, and the agreement points out that you're in compliance with Article 3, Section 52A of the Constitution, which I'm, I would question. So I don't have time to familiarize yourself with that, but just point out this, when you, we already been told these are market rate apartments, okay? So what does market rate rent pay for? Well, it pays, essentially, it pays back the developer, it's a recouping of the expense of building and acquisition of the property, maintenance and operations to run the facility, and it pays for property tax that you would get from the property, that's what market rate rent means. It also builds in, any good developer builds in their margin, their profit margin, all in market rate rent. That's the definition of market rate rent. So what are we doing here? We're charging the renter market rate to pay for all those things, and then on top of it, we're going to double pay the property tax by rebating it to them, to the developer. That's the part that I submit puts you outside compliance with that Constitution statute. And again, I don't have time to explain that all through, but you might want to familiarize yourself with it, because in the end, you're not actually, I don't believe, getting what getting what you claim to be getting. Besides the fact that you're not incentivizing them to come here, they already, the market is doing that for them. The rent that they pay in a market rate rent is what's making them build these apartments. If they didn't have enough money to build the apartments, that's on them, that's not on the market. And so, the, the other thing is, I don't know if anybody paid attention to it, it was really fine print when it came through here, but 140 of the units are gonna be 620 square feet, one-bedroom, one-bath apartments, going for $1,300. It's not actually aimed at the families that everybody keeps talking about this being for, which is fine if that's what we're doing, but it's, again, it's, and 90 of the units that are two-bedroom, two-bath are less than 900 square feet. So, what, 2/3 of the apartments are not really designed for a three- or four-person family, they're defined, defined for, designed for single people, which, again, that's fine, but did we need to incentivize that with a kickback that's double paying property tax? I think not. So, anyways, you might wanna consider that as you move forward with this, and as you take on more handouts from people on Loop 534. Thank you.
That's the end of the citizen speakers.
Any discussion?
Well, we've been in a severe housing shortage, and there's certainly, George makes some good points, and I think the developer made good points somewhat with the city and with the county, that, that there's extra difficulties recently with the costs and, and, and so, I can understand why somebody might think otherwise, but I think we've all so far been feeling like we needed the, the, the housing, and, and in the long haul, we get increased in our tax base, and, and we are sacrificing a little bit, but we're assured to get the apartments that we need. And so, anyway, I'm still in favor of it.
Hayes, do you have any comments?
No, I, I just didn't respond to the speaker. You know, we, we laid that out in the con, in the contract, those, in the recitals, those citations to economic development provisions in both the Constitution and state law, and that's important. I mean, and I think just echoing what Councilmember Kenny just said, it, you are making that finding, right, that this incentive will drive economic development, and that's, that's the basis of it. But for this, I think the developer would argue they're not, they wouldn't come, and so this, this adds to their desire to be here and to provide this type of housing into this market.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve incentive agreement, a 10-year tax rebate in an amount not to exceed 520,000.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Raise your right hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. Okay, we are at 7B.
Amend, oh.
Go ahead, Shelley.
Amendment to Design-Built Agreement between the city of Curville, Texas, and Marksman General Contractors LLC, for the project to redevelop the AC Schreiner House and grounds for a contract amount not to exceed $5,250,000, and there are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right, Michael.
Madam Mayor Pro-Tim, I wanted to highlight several people in the audience, well, not everybody by name, 'cause I'll mess that up, but we have Mark Bobblett here, who is CEO, President of Marksman Construction, and we have Joe Kokamore here from Freezing Nichols, who is our design build advisor. So, this is, and we have several members of the HHHC board here tonight as well, along with Angela Kennedy, the executive director over there. So, this is a long time coming. We have talked about this project for a lot, a lot of days, and so we, I was telling one of the board members earlier, we're finally at the starting line, which it's taken six years to get us to it, so we are well on our way. So, we've gone over this, you've seen this slide from me several times. Project had some escalations in it, and so we worked through some of those challenges. We talked to Marksman about ways that we could kind of, are there ways that we could amend the budget, ways that we could amend the schedule, things that we could do, alternates that we could add, deductions we could make, and so, through kind of a series of, of discussions and changes, the most important of the schedule and the budget at this point being the windows themselves, we've changed the date for completion, and it's in the GMP now as October 31st, so we got about 32 days, which I think is a, it's a lot of days for a construction project that's a year long, so we're excited about that. And so, what we talked about last time hasn't changed, the proposed GMP was $5,250,000. So, we've spent already 175,000 in design fees for Phase 1, that got us to 30%, had a bunch of discussions, got us through Phase 2 with 225,000, and so, the last little piece gets us up to 5.25 million. So, that is kind of the limit to where we have our budget. That's inclusive of all the funds that were raised, the IC dollars that were put towards this. Now, in there, there's $300,000 in contingency and some allowances. The hope is always that you don't use those contingencies, but the reason that they're in there is because you do, a lot of times. And so, this is an older house, maybe some things beneath those walls we don't know about, so in addition to that $300,000, the city has $265,000 on top of that in our owner contingency. So, we're all very hopeful that when Mark digs in underneath the building, they find nothing. When he does, we have some contingency dollars in there. If we don't need to use those contingency dollars, the plan was then to shift that money towards the landscaping for the house, to start working on, maybe kind of expand out the very limited scope we have for the landscaping plan at this point.
Okay.
And so, with that, I will turn it back over, and, and our recommendation is to approve the GMP and move on down the road.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Counsel?
That's great, I'm excited.
They've been working on this a long time.
Yeah, I know there's been a lot of work and a lot of things going into this. I just don't envy the individual that has to crawl underneath the house to plant the pillars by hand, so that's, not a lot of room underneath it, but I think it's gonna be a very nice attraction for Curville.
I think so, too. Anything? Okay, can I get a motion?
I will approve the Marksman Guaranteed Maximum Price Proposal.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Any opposed? And it passes unanimously.
Well, listen, me too, you wanna do it, go right ahead.
Okay, um, now we're on to item 8A, which is board appointments.
This would be Kenton and I on that team, and.
Yes.
I was, I was lucky enough to meet Ryan Acosta at the last Recovery Coalition Committee meeting. He runs his own safe house, and he's just a fine, he's just a great guy. He's got a lot of good ideas on fundraisers and events to, to do for sober, sober people, sober folks, and he had one at Roddy Tree recently, I think, and they sell tickets for it. Anyway, I would, I would definitely suggest we need him to the board, to this vacancy.
Okay, all right.
Point the member.
Okay.
Ryan Acosta.
All in favor of appointing Ryan Acosta? And any opposed? And it passes unanimously. Any, a motion to go into executive session? No?
I don't think we need it.
Okay.
Been there.
I don't think I wanna talk about it.
Okay, any items for future agendas? No?
Nope.
Okay, then at 708, this meeting is adjourned.